Yes. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order, the public meeting of the Coventry School Committee. I have 6:01, and could we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Here.
Dave Florio.
Oh, what happened to Dave? Did we lose him? Yeah, he was here. Okay, well, I guess we can continue. Hopefully, he'll get back on.
Donna Colonian.
Here.
Luke Murray.
Here.
James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Levis.
Here.
Harold Sands.
Here.
Okay. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence as we consider the work before us this evening. Thank you. And I believe, Mrs. Colonian, if you could do the honor of reading the mission statement for Coventry Public Schools.
Sure, give me one second. Let me get scroll back up to the top. The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you very much. Looks like Mr. Florio was joining us. We just lost him again. All right, I guess we can move on to agenda item number two, which is the approval of the minutes of 5:5, 5:8, and 5:13, 2021, as presented. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of 5:5, 2021, 5:8, 2021, and 5:13, 2021, as presented slash amended.
Let's make the motion.
Thanks, Luke. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
He's on yet.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to the public agenda, for the citizens who are gathered here tonight, we allow public comment after all agenda items. If there's a motion or a vote that's going to be taken, we ask for a public comment after I call for the motion. Before I call for the vote, the public has the chance to express their comments or questions before we actually call for the vote. So we can move on to our next agenda item, which is the celebration and recognition of our 2021 seniors entering the field of education and the 2021 seniors completing the Regional Career and Technical Education Center Education Studies Program. So, Mr. Levis, did you want to start this?
Quickly, we did invite, we have 13 individuals, I believe, maybe 14. They had, we had a small ceremony today, thanks to Ms. Ferguson and Ms. Maycumber and our current Teacher of the Year, Cheryl Saucier, kind of emceed, and it was a nice little celebration. Parents and grandparents and significant others came, and it was really nice. We wanted to celebrate them tonight. We did give them all pinous links. I don't see any, but having said that, I think it's, I let them know we're going to, you know, celebrate this publicly, and their families can watch it. So I think I'll turn it over to Ms. Ferguson, and then Ms. Saucier will kind of follow up the same protocol that she used this morning.
Hi, everyone. So the students who graduate from the Education Studies Program are honored with the Aspiring Educators pin, as well as students who are pursuing education. Now, we probably don't have everybody who's pursuing education, because guidance sends out a form for students to complete if they're going on for education, and they want to know what, you know, their college is and what their major is. So, but for the Education Studies Program, of course, we know everybody who is going on from that program. That's a lot easier. So tonight, I'd like to recognize our students, both Coventry High School students and our Career Center students, and starting with those, we have Jade Ryan, Sarah Bryson, Elizabeth Petrangilo, Connor Maycumber, and then from the, Brian Noonan, and from the high school, we have Gabby Bulio, Faith Buser, Marissa Bergantino, we have Emma Johnson, and Ian Leclair. And Cheryl, did I miss someone?
Mackenzie Keener.
Mackenzie Keener.
And Anna Fuentes.
Anna Fuentes, correct. Those are from the high school.
And then from the Career Center, I have Aneisha Fry.
Aneisha Fry.
Melody Asselin. And Elizabeth Petangilo.
Yep, we got her.
Okay.
Cheryl did a wonderful job today recognizing our students. It's so nice for our students to see such a great role model, as far as Cheryl, and having Cheryl be able to recognize them as future teachers. It really was special, Cheryl, for you to do that and for you to be there today. We appreciate that, and I hope we can, you know, make it an annual event where we have our pinning ceremonies, and perhaps we have our Coventry Teacher of the Years, teachers there to support our aspiring educators and to welcome them to the field.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure to be there, so thank you for inviting me. It was so nice to acknowledge our seniors and meet them, talk with them, talk with their families, find out which area they were going into, and just to see the excitement on their faces was really, it was really wonderful. It's a special time and a special time for their families as well. And as I walked around and I got to talk with all the seniors in the morning, I did reach out. I emailed them this afternoon, and I just wanted them to know that my classroom is always open to them. I've lived in town for 30 years. My daughter is a teacher at Ty Oak right now, and I have a lot of hometown pride. So I really hope that in the future, our career paths cross. And I hope to see that we have a lot of these teachers back in our district. We have a wonderful district, one of the best, and I love teaching here. And it was so nice to speak with the seniors this morning, and one of the seniors had said that she feels so blessed to be a part of the district, and said that the teachers at our high school could not have been more supportive and more wonderful, and that she just wanted to be like her high school teacher. So I thought that was just such a wonderful shout out to everyone at the high school, and she was so excited to start her career. So thank you so much for inviting me and having me as part of the ceremony. I was very happy to be there, so thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And I think it was so nice to have our parents there. I don't think they realize how special it is for their children to be going on to become educators, you know, and going on in this field. It is a very special field. I think we all feel that way, because we're in education, but it really takes a special person to touch a child, whether it be, you know, a preschool child, a middle school child, or a high school student. But to have that effect on a child and to know that you are, you might be the person who really steers their life. You know, I don't think, sometimes parents really understand that the significance of a teacher, but I think it was nice to have our parents there and just to recognize that their students, their children are going into a very welcoming and appreciative field.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for those comments. It sounds like it was a wonderful, wonderful ceremony.
It was.
It was. And to all the graduating seniors, congratulations to all of you. If you're listening, I'm sorry that you weren't able to make it tonight, but I know you've got busy, busy lives. So I'm going to just start with Mr. Pearson. Did you want to make any comments or have any questions for our two educators?
Hopefully, they're watching. I'll just congratulate the seniors who received their pins. I think it's great that we have recognition for students, you know, who so early on in high school, I didn't know what I wanted to do when I was in high school. So, so early on in high school have decided on a career path, and they know what they want to do, marching forward. So recognizing that, encouraging that more broadly, I think is a great initiative that we do. So thank you for putting this program together.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mrs. Colonian.
I'd like to congratulate the seniors also. It's really, you know, it's a, it's nice. It's a nice ceremony, and I'm very happy that they were able to attend this. And sorry about that. Just, you know, so it, I'm really, really happy for them, and congratulations. And thank you both for being such good mentors.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Mr. Murray.
I'll echo the thank you for the ceremony and tell that, congrats to all the seniors. Education is a pretty, you know, is a special profession. I think it's one of the only professions that students really, all students get exposed to early on, obviously, because they have teachers. And so, you know, it's nice to know that many come out and want to model their teachers and educators to choose that as a profession, and usually that's because they see good models of what that job looks like. And so that's a credit to our school system and the teachers that are in it. So I thank all our teachers and educators, because obviously they're providing that role model that that students want to shape into and move forward with. And I wish them all good luck in their futures, and hopefully they come back to the district as quality people in our team, and come move back and stay in Coventry. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Florio.
I just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said. Madam Chair, our community is so proud of you, and thank you so much for working towards this honor. And we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. And I think I'll just repeat something you said. The word honor, I think it's an honorable profession to be a teacher, one of the most honorable, and you are all inspirations to all of us. And I know these future teachers will be an inspiration to their students. I think, I think people sometimes forget that for most of us, like Mr. Murray said, you know, we, we all have had teachers in our lives, and more likely than not, if you asked us all, who was the teacher that made all the difference in your life, and would, would all come up with someone, or maybe even two or three, special educators that just were our heroes, basically. And so I want to thank the teaching profession. I think it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful, honorable profession, and I'm so glad that people are still willing to seek out this career. It is a vocation, and it takes a special person to be a great teacher. So, and we obviously have our Teacher of the Year here, so obviously you're a great teacher, and there are so many of you in the Coventry community, and actually across our country, that are just outstanding educators. And even our administrators typically were former educators. So you've all been in the classroom at one point or other, and even me. I was trained as a teacher and actually taught in middle school, and I missed that. I really missed that. I wish I had, in some ways, my life had taken a different turn, and I had stayed in teaching. So my hat goes out to all of our seniors that have chosen this career, and I wish you all the best of luck. And thank you to your parents for supporting you and all your teachers as well. You obviously have had great mentors. And I'm going to ask if there are any attendees that would like to raise their hand and offer any congratulations or comments. Looks like, looks like Mr. Cowett would like to comment.
So I wanted to say congratulations to all those students and the teachers, and for Lori and Cheryl for planning an excellent ceremony. I was there. And my comment is really about being a little bit envious of these kids, because they have a career and technical center that provides them the opportunity to try on teaching by doing hands-on experiences, to be involved in a classroom. And a lot of us who are teachers didn't have that opportunity. You know, we stumbled into it. We didn't know if we wanted to be teachers or not. We had to kind of figure it out on our own, and some people went through entire teaching preparatory programs just to discover at the end that they really, it wasn't a good match for them. And then others go through programs, and then they go on and they become teachers. And these kids were able to figure it out and try it on at the, at the high school level, which is just such a great, great opportunity. I was, I was very envious of them. I got into teaching late, and I really wish I had gotten in a little bit earlier. And when I saw these kids and thinking about the ones from the career center who really got a first, first hands-on experience, you know, and as young as ninth and 10th grade, I just thought it was just, just such a great thing for them to have that opportunity. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cowett. Any other people out in the public that would like to comment?
I don't see any hands.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Again, thank you so much for coming tonight, Mrs. Ferguson and Mrs. Saucier. It's been a pleasure. Thank you for your mentorship and your wonderful ceremony that you had today. I'm sure the students and parents really, really appreciated the time and effort you've put into this program and to being such great mentors for our students. So thanks so much for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. I certainly appreciate you recognizing our students and honoring them. So thank you for taking the time to do that. I appreciate it.
It was our pleasure. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, I guess we can move on to item number four, which is the Certified Personnel Recalls Discussion and Approval. Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to this before we make a motion?
Yes, just, we're going to be recalling two teachers tonight, one back to position and one back to job fair based on the availability of positions, so that'll leave 13 teachers, I believe, on, that are, continue to be laid off.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that to approve the recommendation of the superintendent that the following personnel be recalled from layoff for the 2021-2022 school year. Sarah Blessing, 1.0, school nurse teacher, Allen Sean Feinstein Elementary School, May 27, 2021, recalled to position. Molly O'Keefe, .6, social studies teacher, Coventry High School, May 27, 2021, recalled to job fair.
I just wanted to say that it's the middle school, Mr. Florio. I think you said elementary.
Allen Sean Feinstein Middle School. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item number five, which is the School Property Disposition Policy, which is our second reading. It was our reference number one. I know we looked at this at our last meeting.
This is, unfortunately.
It's the first reading. Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
No, it's the second reading, I believe.
I'm sorry, okay.
I didn't upload the right version. Mr. Pearson had pointed out that I didn't have brackets, and I did correct it, but obviously didn't submit the right version. So I do have the corrected version.
Does anyone feel the need to see that second version before we actually dispense? And so we're dispensing with the second reading, but are we approving?
Yes.
Yes.
Be approved.
Exactly, yeah. So, Mrs. Colonian.
I mean, if that's the only change, I don't have a problem with it.
Is the committee ready to dispense with the second reading? Could we have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the second reading of the School Property Disposition Policy DN.
I second the motion.
Any, any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote on that?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the approval, is there a motion to approve the policy on school property disposition?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the policy on school property disposition.
I second the motion.
Any discussion or comments from anyone? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public? Again, seeing no questions, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yeah.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero, and thank you to the Policy Committee for your hard work on that. Moving on to the next policy, which is the School Calendar Policy, ICA. It's our first reading. And so is there a motion to dispense with the first reading?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the first reading, revision of the School Calendar Policy, ICA.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Are there any comments from either Mr. Levis or Mr. Pearson on this policy?
I don't know if Mr. Pearson wants to add, but there are just some, we cleaned up some of the language. You'll see where I struck it and put the new language in, and under calendar considerations, it was recommended that we add, because the input has come recently from the Department of Education, Rhode Island Department of Education, and the Rhode Island School Superintendent's Association.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Could have said it better. Just some slight changes to make sure that the policy is up to date with current practice.
Okay, it looks like, before I call for the vote, it looks like there's an attendee with a question. So, Mr. Murphy, if you could bring them in?
Kelly Aronakis, if you could just state your name for the record.
Hi, Kelly Aronakis, CTA President. Just as your folks are cleaning up that policy, I'd like to draw a couple of your attention, if I may. Towards the bottom of the policy, it talks about parent-teacher conferences. We no longer do parent-teacher conferences, because now we respond to parents individually as they call us, as they email us, or whatever. It's a better way to do it, and that's what the contract says. And then there's another line that states the 184 days that are required by the Department of Education. That is not in legislation, is not required. So if you're just updating it, those are two things that I would ask you to take a peek at before you do your second reading, please.
So can I respond to the parent-teacher conference?
Sure.
Because this year, it is in the contract, it is in the calendar going into next year. You have parent-teacher conferences for the pre-K.
Only under an MOA, Mr. Levis. It's not part of the contract. I signed them a memorandum agreement to allow that, because it's different at the pre-K level.
Correct. But I don't know if.
And again, the point of this policy is to take into account those things. So if there's an MOA about parent-teacher conferences, we need to consider that when we're building our calendar for the next school year.
You could just then say maybe it's pre-K conferences. I would appreciate that. So it's clear to everybody. I just want the parents to know that we still, it's not just a conference. They can contact us and meet with us whenever they want. They seem to really like that, and I just didn't want to have any confusion. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Aronakis. And I don't see any further hands up.
Why not?
So if we could have a roll call vote on the dispensing of the first reading.
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes, with consideration of the CTA's request.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item number seven, the School Building Committee update. Mr. Murray, I believe that's you.
Yeah, so we're plugging away. It's going to be a busy month. We had a building committee meeting on Tuesday. Talked a lot, a lot of topics. It's been the first meeting we've had in a little bit. We wanted to wait until we got the letter from RIDE and the commitment on the stage two. We have that commitment. The reimbursement rate's 62.8%, which includes our 42.8% base rate and our 20% bonus rate. That is the commitment from RIDE. What we need to do now is continue to work with the town and simultaneously build up an effort if we move forward towards a bond. So that means that communications are core and central, what we'll be doing on the School Building Committee. In addition, I've been working with the administration on the school side to meet with the town, get everyone to the table. So Mr. Sands, the architect, Alita Hall, and I met with the town manager and town finance director. When was that, Harold? Was it yesterday? Yesterday.
Yes.
And, and it was a lengthy meeting. We're trying to get the administration, obviously, we have some new members in our administration, including town manager, trying to get them up to date on all of the processes that have been done to date, and also figure out how we move forward, because we are having leadership meetings on due diligence in the background on this to determine the financial capacity impact on bond rating, looking at from various financial scenarios. So I believe that Mr. Sands has now a meeting with Ms. Mills next week to discuss some in-depth financials. I'm going to be asking that we have another leadership meeting to, to call shortly thereafter. I have been advised by the council president that currently we are on the schedule for the 21st of June to present the School Building Committee, all of the data and information we have. Prospectively, that would also include a town presentation of financial scenarios, which we hope includes some scenarios that we've come up with. Creative, I'll call it creative thinking as far as the financing of the project and how to, you know, obviously put this to the voters. That would be followed up by a vote on the 28th, as currently scheduled. I do have some concerns on that. I reached out to Rep. Noray and also Senator Rep. Takis, because they've expressed interest in sponsoring legislation, the enabling legislation on the bond. I'm waiting to hear back on timeframes from them to back up the schedule to determine if the council schedule works. We would have to have all our packet materials to council by June 11th, which really puts us under a tight timeframe, because as we know, it's a holiday weekend, so which means that we really come out of the holiday week, and we only have a week to get a lot of stuff together. So I'll be working with a small team to get a presentation together, and some of those packet materials assembled, including the architect who's offered to assist. And we have another building committee meeting next week, next Tuesday at 6:00. The agenda went up today. So we're going to be having school building committees meetings quite often going forward, and especially if we move forward with that bond. It's going to get more and more aggressive over the summer until, prospectively, September, October, if we go to a bond vote. But at this point, it's really in the hands of the council on whether they're going to allow us to move forward, because it's really their call from the financial capacity and whether they think the voters have the will to move something forward. So my hope is that we can present the data and do, you know, do exactly what we've done through this, which is, I think, trying to get it right. I think we, the School Building Committee went through a really great process. The Building Committee did a great job coming up with a vision and a product. We need to fulfill that vision and product, get it moved forward, and explain to the town of why there's value in this project. So there's a lot of work to do, but we have a great team to do it, and I'm confident we'll get it done. So I'm going to have another update for you. By the time I have another update, we're going to be light years ahead of where I am tonight, hopefully. And my hope is our packets into, into councils by that point, which is actually a day after a budget referendum. So a lot of things coming in at the same time. It's a busy June, so. Does anybody have any questions in the meeting at this point? So does anybody have any questions in me at this point?
No.
I just have a statement. Madam Chair, I just have a statement.
Go ahead, Mr. Florio.
I think Luke is doing a fantastic, Luke and his committee are doing a great job of working with everyone to get this school bond passed.
I just wanted to say, too, that I really, I know that it's a lot of work, and I really want to thank you and the committee for all of your hard work, because I, you know, I'm sure that you've laid awake at night thinking about how you were going to get people to jump on board with this. So, but thank you. It's appreciated.
It does keep me up at night these days.
Yeah, it would keep me up at night.
And I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Sands, who's, you know, in amongst trying to get the budget together and other things. He's been instrumental in helping me run numbers and trying to to get together with the administration to really have a thoughtful discussion behind the scenes on how we make all this potentially work. So he's been great to work with, and I look forward to, you know, it's a team effort from every angle on this, and it's gonna continue to have to be that way moving forward to get this to be successful. So I just wanted to point him out and recognize his efforts as well.
Thank you. Look, I have one question. And I'm not really all that familiar. I know that at this time of the year, the General Assembly is kind of trying to work on their budget, and sometimes do they extend the session past the end of June if they're not quite ready? Because they're still working on the budget. And the reason I ask is, we have a very tight schedule here. And so my first question is, do we think that the session might go a little bit into July? And then the second question would be, is there any chance that our local sponsors, you know, G A sponsors, could put forward the bill with the notation that as long as it's approved by the council, like contingent upon approval, can one go before the other? Or do we have to definitely approve it as a town council school committee and then go to the G A?
So I've asked that question, which has been forwarded to the legal counsel up on the House. To my understanding, I actually asked that question yesterday. I emailed it over to Tom Noray, and he's checking on that for me. Maybe Mr. Anderson has something on that, but I'll tell you.
Sure, two things. Another one of my clients, I am not a lobbyist at the State House, however, another one of my clients, a nonprofit, does have a lobbyist at the State House. They are anticipating, or they are trying to get out the third or the third week of June. That does not mean that will happen. One year, the General Assembly was in session until the end of the first week of August. So while they try to get out, you know, it's kind of like you get to go home and get your homework done. The General Assembly is the same way. As far as what the General Assembly can do and what they will do, those are two different things. They certainly can do this if the General Assembly so wishes. On the other hand, typically, the way that it works is that they're not gonna move anything without a town council resolution. But not, again, I want to say, that's not a law or cast in stone. You know, the General Assembly in Rhode Island can do a lot of things if they want to.
I may have to pull some favors on this one. But I will tell you, yeah, to John Anderson's point, they typically are working on the budget. And so they're not gonna, they're not gonna stop their vacations for Coventry. Get out early, they will typically, although, you know, this year's budget cycle, I'm sure is gonna be difficult. So what concerns me, quite honestly, is once they get in the budget cycle, they typically hold a lot for study, and then at the very end of session, you see a lot of bills pass. And then it goes in the budget, and then everybody disappears. So if we don't have this stuff in front of them, I'm extremely concerned we may not get the enabling legislation. So I'll continue to work with our delegation to see what we can push that to and pull back the schedule, and I'll work with council, and we're gonna make this happen, one way or another.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, as well. Are there any folks in the public that would like to ask any question from Mr. Murray or someone else on a panel?
I know hands.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Again, thank you, Mr. Murray, for that discussion, and good luck. So moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, the Tyog Elementary Septic System Notice of Intent to Enforce from D E M Discussion. It was a late reference for us, but hopefully you've had a chance to take a quick look at it. Mr. Levis, did you want to start this discussion?
This is my second strike of the night. Unfortunately, the reference should have been submitted on Friday, but it wasn't till today. So I'll go through, the first part is just what has transpired. I think the Tyog Septic System is not a new topic. I know since I've been here, it's been brought to the committee a few different times for a few different reasons. In fact, it wasn't long ago, Mr. Florio had brought up, someone had some concerns, but we went out the same day and weren't able to verify that there was any, you know, I think it was students or children walking through any wet areas, and I know Mr. Martin went out there immediately that day, and there was no indication. But then there was a conversation around the capital improvement list plan, and we did have Mr. Martin and Mr. Plant take a look at them, and I think that the words that we used was, they're tired. But, you know, there was no indication that there's any, you know, that they could collapse in any, you know, we didn't know when it would fail. They're taken care of regularly by Mr. Plant. What transpired was on April 11th, the interim town manager received an email from a citizen, he forwarded that email on the 12th to myself and Mr. Marshon, saying that two parts of the email, one, and I believe I, one was a reference to trash around the perimeter of Tyog. Mr. Martin had our people go, it included like tires and mattresses. It's not school property, but it is a buffer zone, so they cleaned that up. The other part was in reference to, you know, the septic overflowing. Mr. Martin went out there with the plumber, our plumber, and called Ray Plant. Mr. Plant came out and pumped the septic system, and obviously, there was evidence that it had overflowed, you know, overflowed. And I have some of the documentation, the invoice that was done on that day. Well, meanwhile, D E M had been notified, I believe, on the 14th, they came out. And as a result of that, they talked about the failure of the system, and we received a notice of intent to enforce. As soon as I received that, I, first call was to Mr. Anderson, and then I just collected some information and data from Mr. Plant, from Mr. Martin, who is, Mr. Martin's also available tonight to discuss this. The bottom line is that, you know, I think we've known that the system is old. It's hard to predict, but we're in a situation right now where D E M has mandated, and I spoke with a gentleman, Steve Terrell, who gave us the notice of intent to enforce. Basically said, you know, we're fortunate, we can tie into a sewer. We need to do that as soon as possible. If the sewer wasn't available, he would ask for us to have a complete system redesigned, which my understanding could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. There is a quote in here from 2018 from Mr. Plant that was about $35,000. My understanding is it, the estimate now is closer to $40,000. I've spoken to Mr. Sands, and we'll talk about this in Next Agenda Item, about the process we're gonna undertake in terms of going out to bid. So this is where we're at. That, you know, the notice of intent to enforce is, there's no wiggle room there. I explained, and you'll see a letter, I explained to Mr. Terrell that I was putting on the agenda for tonight and also putting on the agenda to go out to bid. And he said that, you know, he wants to make sure we do this in a timely manner, like not wait till next year. So I assured him that I would bring it forward. Mr. Anderson's also here to answer any questions, if you have questions about the notice of intent to enforce. So having said that, I'll open it up to any questions. And again, Mr. Martin is in the audience. He can be pulled in to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Mr. Pearson, do you have any questions for the superintendent?
Yes. Does this need to go before sewer subcommittee for approval for a tie-in into a sewer line?
That is a good question.
Didn't we, sorry, didn't we already do that? I can remember this being in the council.
It was, it was, there was some controversy around, engineering was done, plans were designed on the town side, but I can't tell you if they've gone to the sewer subcommittee.
Yeah, I think the town engineer did something. Okay, something to find out, then. I just want to make sure we follow the right processes, so we don't get ourselves into a further situation. The other point of concern I have, or one other point of concern I have, is need to get clarification around the sewer line we'd be tying into. Is that owned by the town, or is it privately owned? My last understanding was it was privately owned. Do we have clarification on that?
Yeah, I will get further clarification, but the last time this was discussed, we have documentation where I believe it was Mr. Assalon had given us or the town permission to tie in.
So there's something in our town called the Quignick Reservoir, and there was a corporation formed, you know, a long time ago to make sure there was enough water in the reservoir to turn the mills during the day, because the natural river flow was not adequate enough. And so they built some dams and formed this quasi-public corporation. I don't want to run into a situation where we tie into a private line, and then we have someone in the future who purchases that line and says we have to start paying some exorbitant fees for the privilege. Therefore, I really would ask that we have some kind of, you know, look into what kind of legal protections we have in place not to, not to get, you know, leased down the road by whoever owns the line, if it is a private line. I think I've expressed that concern before, but now we're under the gun to get this done quicker. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mrs. Colonian, any questions?
Yeah, impact fees. Will we be able to get impact fees to pay for this?
We received impact fees every year.
Okay.
So I, you know, that's something that we can talk about in terms of the funding piece. I think once we get the, you know, I mean, obviously, I have to clear up these questions, and Mr. Pearson brought up, and I'll work with Mr. Sands and Mr. Anderson, and obviously, the town to get these responses. But at the end of the day, we do have impact fees. We could utilize those, but we haven't made that decision yet. This will most likely take place in next fiscal year, and we'll have to take a look and see. But we definitely do receive impact fees and could utilize, I believe, impact fees for this.
I know that there's a subdivision of 30 houses going in over there. So, and they're all tying into the sewer. That's why I mentioned that, you know. So, you know, if the B, you could probably get the impact fees from those homes. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Mr. Murray?
So I think my fellow members made some really good points. You know, whether it be getting clarity on the line, going through, ensuring that we do have approval for the connection from the sewer subcommittee. And then, you know, I don't have a problem necessarily with the town's help as far as designing. I know that they provided help. The town engineer, they actually subbed it out. I think they're still using Crossman Engineering, Bruce Hagerman, who is certainly qualified to do this. He's done a lot of private work for us in the past for my projects. So, you know, if we can get that design service paid for through the town, that's helpful. Housing aid reimbursement. I'm assuming if we spend money on this for our own budget, we get some of this back to our housing, right?
So, yeah, it'll, two things, it'll count towards our maintenance, right?
Right.
We could, we could approach RIDE to, for like emergencies, so we could get housing aid. I think that what we need to discuss with the town moving forward is where does that housing aid go?
I think, you know, it's certainly an emergency, and it's spent by the school district out of our money. It should come to us, I would think, and especially if it's coming out of our impact, so, which helps, cuts our costs almost in half. So I would certainly fight for that one, especially if it comes out of our pot. A little different when it comes to bond money. So, yeah, I know, I know this has been a long time issue. I know it's been brought up before. I have no problem solving this, because it keeps coming up. And obviously, you're working the issue, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Levis, and whoever sent that letter to D E M, thank you very much. This has been an ongoing issue in District Four for at least 10 years that I know of. It's a very old system. It needs to be replaced. It needs to be fixed. And I think I'm extremely happy for the people that work in the building and for the children that attend the school. Thank you very much, and that's all I have to say, Madam Chair. I really do, finally, it's finally coming true. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. I don't have any questions. I think everything's been answered from my point of view. Are there any people in the public, our attendees, that would like to ask a question or comment on this particular item?
We don't have any hands.
Okay, thank you. So is the committee ready to motion for us to go out to bid for this project? Do we need any more discussion? Then, Mr. Florio, if you'd like to make a motion, that'd be great.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the request to go out to bid for Tyog Elementary Elks School sewer connection.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Any discussion about the bid process? Mr. Levis?
No, I think the points that have been brought up tonight, there were excellent points about the sewer subcommission, the fact that to determine if they're privately owned and what the, you know, what kind of agreement can we get put in place in writing? And so I think those are things that I need to, I think we can do that parallel, but I, at least part of it, putting the bid together, just, you know, the process was gonna be that, Mr. Sands, we're gonna work with somebody off the M P A list, you know, in terms of either Colliers or an organization that'll help us, you know, come up with a really good R F P and also potentially help us with the sewer work itself. So we want to make sure we get this right, and, you know, Mr. Anderson will be part of that process. But I also, I need to get clarification on those questions also.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, I noticed you took your mic off. Did you want to comment on this before we?
I was just getting, I was just getting ready to vote.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second. And are there any attendees that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Catherine Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Item Number 10, which is the FY '22 Budget Discussion and Vote to Approve. Mr. Levis, did you want to start?
Yes, Mr. Sands is obviously here. I just want to take in a moment, too, to thank Mr. Sands. I think, I appreciate Mr. Murray. You know, there's a lot of work behind the scenes going on, you know, coming into the situation that we've been through. And, you know, I can't thank Mr. Sands enough for the work he's been doing behind the scenes, and I know he's been extremely helpful to the School Building Committee, but to us here in the budget process. So I want to thank him, and he can answer any questions, but very, you know, the town council had put forward a budget of, I believe it was 2.99 levy. That was a reduction for the school department's request of $329,550. We made those adjustments in salary and benefits. And I strongly, you know, if we didn't receive COVID funds, if we weren't in a pandemic, I think it would be a different situation. But the fact that, you know, we're able to have fund balance to utilize to support us, and we have the COVID funds, you know, we're committed to support this. and we have the COVID funds, you know, we're committed to support this, uh, this budget. We're closely with, you know, your counterparts and the council. I am working closely with Mr. Marshon to, um, you know, and, and many of our, our, our staff and, uh, community members have committed to supporting to get the vote out. So, um, I would strongly, you know, suggest that we support this, this budget. And, uh, I would ask the committee to, to, if you have any questions, Mr. Sands is here to answer the questions. But I would ask you to support the adjustment in this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Um, I'll start with Mr. Pearson. Do you have any questions?
Yes, um, I didn't get a chance to watch the discourse during the, the council meeting. Um, but I did, I did notice they did have some reduction in capital. Is that impacting the schools at all? Are they reducing our, our capital line item?
Well, they didn't give us any capital, so they, the, uh, the conversation was, you know, I, yeah, so we, um, yeah, I, we, we need, this community needs to have a budget and, and that's why we're, we're, we're supporting this. I mean, we know we have incredible capital needs. They did reduce the, uh, the $500,000 that they were going to have on the town side. They reduced that to zero. But, uh, capital is still a major issue. I think we all recognize this in this community. And, you know, we need to start investing in it. But, um, you know, we've been talking strategically, Mr. Sands and myself. And, uh, I know there's a lot of strategic conversation going on with Mr. Murray and the building committee. We know we need to invest in capital and find a way, and we're going to try to continue to do that. So it is a concern, but they didn't reduce our capital.
No, we didn't get capital. How is that going to impact our ability to get housing aid in the next fiscal year?
In terms of the maintenance?
Right.
So, I mean, I think we're, we're, we have discussed, um, you know, our, our strategy, obviously, um, the, using some COVID funds to make some necess- necessary repairs that are eligible under our health and safety. So we believe that, you know, we're, we're going to be potentially on target. I think we have to identify, was it a $287,000, I think? But we do have some areas that we can work on. This sewer connection will help go towards the maintenance. Um, you know, I, it's a catch 22 because I say we're going to struggle and, you know, it, every year is a struggle here. We know that, but we have balanced the budget creatively. I know there's a difference in definitions, but, um, we're committed to working with you and working with the, the, you know, our budget within our budget and we're using our COVID funds to meet that maintenance requirement. You know, we know it's brought up that we were the only community in FY20 that didn't meet it, but there's reasons behind that. You know, again, um, but I, I think first things first, you know, we definitely just need to get this budget passed. I don't think this community can deal with another rejected budget. I know it's going to be, uh, you know, extremely difficult for us and, you know, then we wouldn't be able to meet that maintenance requirement. But that's something, just so you know, uh, we talk about, Mr. Sands and I talk about, you know, partnering with Mr. Martin, you know, weekly about the maintenance. We want to put ourselves in a position next year to make sure that we can meet that maintenance requirement.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Uh, Mrs. Coloney?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Uh, I, I think I, I just, my only question would be, and I know, I guess it's one you can't answer is, you know, I know that we are adding in positions. Um, how is, do you have any sense of staffing at this point? How it's going to be? What impact will this have? I guess. I know we are adding some positions. Are we looking to essentially not add those positions or?
No, because we reduce positions based on enrollment. Now we sit, we're starting to see, you know, we, we have a job fair on June 15th. We want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're monitoring numbers, numbers. Mr. Coward's been looking at enrollment daily. Next week, uh, before our next school committee meeting, we'll come back with, uh, different, you know, our enrollment numbers. We may have to, you know, as of tonight, we have 13 teachers laid off. Some of those teachers may come back because of the new positions. So that, those positions will be funded through the COVID funds, except for the, the few that we put in the local cell. You know, I, I, it's not going to impact the positions we need next year, but the, the, uh, the 329, 550 is offset right now by the personnel, the layoffs. But as enrollment increases, and, and we've said, we do believe we're going to have significant enrollment in our kindergarten, uh, based on, you know, the number of classes we have now and what we typically have in the summer. So, um, you know, it may, it may be close, but I think we're, we're comfortable that we'll be able to, you know, this reduction of 329, 550 will be covered in terms of the personnel decisions that we have made.
Okay. I know it's early, which, it was still looking at programs, enrollment, other things. So I guess to be continued, right? Um, the only other thing I'll, I guess I'll bring up is, and it, and it was a very good point made on capital. Um, they, the town side cut up their $500,000. And we continue on with our saga here in Coventry of never allocating capital, uh, either for the town or school. And so I, I highlight that and that, once again, we have an opportunity coming up to invest in our schools significantly. And for many, 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 many years, this town has not provided any investment whatsoever. So the price eventually becomes due. And so, you know, my hope is that, we highlight that movement going forward and that the part of the reason that we're looking at building, you know, I would say a new middle school, but a substantially renovated middle school, in addition to putting some heavy dollars into our other facilities with a very large reimbursement graciously from the state, is because, you know, we haven't put any capital in for many years. So, um, now's the time. We had another year where we've gotten nothing in that category and we can't continue to go on this. At some point, uh, the price is going to come due. So my hope is that people remember that, especially over the next month as we lobby for this, uh, building bond to go forward.
Yeah.
I'll, uh, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, Mr. Florio?
Uh, Mr. Levis, since the town council feels that they don't, they want to approve all contracts, including the ones for the SRP, is this going to, is the SRP contract going to be included in the F, in the FY22 budget?
Yeah, yes, it, it's already included in there. We put that in there.
Even if they decide they don't want the contract and they want us to renegotiate?
Yeah, I'm not, you know, and I'm not even going to discuss that.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, 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 I'm just saying it's, you know, we budgeted for it and, um, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. So, I mean, I think we, we did what we needed to do in good faith and, um, so, but it is built, to answer your question, it is in the, in the, um, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Florio.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Um.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. Um, are there any attendees that would like to ask any questions or have any comments for us?
There are no hands.
Um, thank you so much. Um, are we ready to move on the budget approval? I will consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the FY22 budget as presented slash amended in the amount of $75,256,323 with $48,632 and 148,632,183 coming from local appropriations.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion from the committee? Anything from the public? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Martin?
Catherine Patnun?
Yes.
David Florio?
Yes.
Donna Coloney?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Uh, moving on to agenda item number 11, the superintendent's report. Mr. Levis, you're on again.
No, I always say I'm going to keep this brief, but I promised him that I'm going to keep it brief. So, um, so I just want to, you know, s- stress in that there's been a lot of effort with the leadership, uh, you know, in terms of school committee council and the municipal and school leadership, along with many stakeholders, parents, group PTOs, uh, union leadership, organizations that support our, our, you know, youth organization, youth boards organizations, to, um, make sure that they get the vote out. We've recognized that there's just, um, you know, in the past, less than, you know, a little around 8% of the individuals voted. So I just want to thank those individuals who have been supporting this. I think you're going to see this effort ramping up in the next week or so. And, um, that we need everybody, you know, June 10th is the, uh, all-day referendum, June 8th is the FTM. But we need everybody, uh, to share their voice and, and, and support for this community. Um, I think there was great points that were made about the capital. And, you know, we, we, we say this in the short time I've been here, it's, you know, the need, but there's no support. And, you know, I, I see a lot of change taking place and just in terms of the school building committee. You know, it's a, it's an incredible, uh, group of individuals who are highly qualified. And I think, um, you know, the, the, we're, we're discussing a lot around communication, but I believe just having the right people with the right message and doing due diligence and getting that message out there makes a difference. And I think that's what we've done with the budget. And, uh, though, you know, I would have liked to get the whole amount, but, um, you know, we, we can definitely make this work and address the needs of our, our school community. And so it's important for us to continue to get that message out. And I just want to say, I think you'll see that ramping up in the next week. There's commercials that have been, you know, interviews that have been done on the local radio, more that will be done, commercials. And, uh, there'll be signs being placed out just to get, you know, the message out. So I want to thank everybody that's part of that. I also want to highlight that we will be doing summer grab and go meals. We're in the process of figuring out, they're most likely going to take place at the high school. Uh, most likely be, you know, maybe one or two days, but we, we're going to give seven days worth of meals. And we'll try to very, you know, market the times and the dates and, uh, uh, to get that message out to our community. Um, they've been giving out seven meals at once now and it's been, uh, they doubled the amount of meals that have been taken by members of our community. We're also going to be able to probably provide grab and go meals to any programs we run. Summer programs, local programs where our students are going, the YMCA, the REC Center. I've been working with both of them on, not only helping fund their programs, but also making sure that we can provide meals to those sites, which is going to be a great resource, for our families and our students and also for these programs. And it'll also help our bottom line. We'll have more information to come on that. Uh, class of 21 graduation update, you should be getting if you haven't, but you should be getting a, uh, an invitation. You know, I've been getting a lot of calls from other superintendents, saying, you know, we're, I don't know if it's good or bad, but we're kind of the model out there. Um, we're going to have six individuals be able to attend. It's outdoors. You know, I'm going to thank, uh, Mr. Leonard, the senior class advisor, who actually went out and measured where six chairs go and three feet in between. And, um, you know, I know it's, it's, it's extremely stressful. You know, we're trying to make sure that we protect our students and that, you know, we're not hit with some type of, um, quarantine situation. You know, we've been dealing with that, um, daily and, uh, but I think it's going to be incredible moment, to see that many people there. Um, you know, I, I applaud the high school for the amount of effort they're putting into this. But, you know, we're, we're, you know, I think it's going to be just a great way for us to kind of, you know, get this breakthrough from, from the pandemic. It's, we're not, you know, we're not, um, out of the woods yet by any means. But I think it's going to be a great celebration and, uh, you know, I look forward to seeing everybody there. But I wanted to, you know, keep you posted.
Mr. Levis, are all the school committee members invited to attend?
Yes, Mr. Florio.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we, can we park in the parking lot of the high school?
There'll be special parking, Mr. Florio. We'll, uh, but that'll come out at a later date.
Thank you, sir.
And then finally, um, I did share with you, I think, some updated, uh, document in terms of, uh, the CDC. We're still required, school, you know, schools, uh, daycares, we're still required to wear masks. You know, I'm not sure what decision I would make if we, they said we, you know, fully vaccinated individuals didn't have to because many of our students aren't able to be vaccinated. And those that have recently received vaccinations wouldn't be fully vaccinated. And, you know, I don't know how that, I, I know myself, I couldn't stand in front of students not wearing a mask, knowing that they had to wear a mask. You know, I don't have to, we don't have to make that decision, but those, that's my thinking. But right now masks are mandated. I believe by the time when we do graduation, you know, when people are sitting down and, and, you know, separated, we won't have to wear masks during that, so that'll be nice. And, and we'll stay tuned. We'll keep, I'll keep the committee posted and the community posted as, as, uh, situation changes. We are doing our, uh, tomorrow morning, I believe it's 9:30 to 10:30, we have our second vaccination clinic for 16, 17, 8-year-olds. And I want to again thank the EMA, Coventry and Exeter EMA and all of our staff that support that. We actually have made arrangements. We have a couple of students that are quarantined and they'll be able to drive up and, and be vaccinated out in front of where the flags are. So that was, you know, I appreciate the help, uh, of, of everybody involved with that. We're also going to be looking at the last two things I have is, um, a test station forms. We require students and staff to do that daily. We'll be sending something out over the weekend, but I believe starting next week, we're going to ask people to do one just for the rest of the year. You know, it's, it's extremely time consuming. Uh, we, it's been the right thing to do. Many districts have already stopped doing it, but we're going to ask our staff to fill out one. And, you know, basically if you have a fever, you know, all those questions you answer, we honor those on a daily basis. And the same with families. We know it's been, uh, you know, uh, an inconvenience, but I think our community has done an amazing job just trying to support one another these challenging times. I made a comment earlier today, like, I can't wait for today to end, you know? And, uh, I'm sure, I can only speak for myself, but, uh, you know, I never used to feel that way. I'd kid around about it, but it's, it's my truth lately. And we know these are challenging times. So we want to, you know, step back and reflect. So we're going to be changing that. And the last thing is that we have very few people that are taking advantage of the buy next now testing. And it's, you know, we're still mandating it for athletes. You know, CDC, CDC still says that it is one of the best ways to stop the spread. We did pilot pool testing. Uh, I want to thank the middle school. The state's looking at if we were to do testing next year, their plan is not to fund it. So if, if we were going to do it, we have to find more cost-effective ways of doing it. So pool testing is where you take 28 swabs and you stick them in one vial or test tube. And that, what test tube is tested, you know, one, as one test. If it comes back, uh, positive, then you go back and you do individual tests for those, uh, members who were the pool. So we, we have a few people that are volunteered to do that. But, um, starting next week, we also have letters, they'll be going out to families and staff that will be saying that we're going to, you know, stop doing the, the, the binax testing. Obviously, if, if people wanted, I think we could make that available. But it's just, it's staff very stat, you know, involved, uh, taking our staff away from doing the other things that they need to be doing. And we have so few students that are actually taking advantage of it right now. So we're going to continue with our athletes. Um, you know, we have a few weeks left of our seasons. We want to make sure that we, we can finish those. But, um, and you'll get copies of those, uh, letters that'll be going out to families. I'll make sure of the school committee. So that's, uh, that's my, uh, my report. And, uh, I just again want to thank everybody. Um, you know, we have less than a month left and it's just been an incredible, um, 18 months. And, uh, you know, we, we have such great community members, support staff across the board. And I, I can't thank people enough. We've gotten us this far and we're almost there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Did you want to, um, bring up the, um, senior center breakfast tomorrow morning?
Sure. Eight o'clock tomorrow, eight to 9:30, $3. Our CT culinary arts students are serving breakfast. They, they're cooking it. They serve it. It's the first large event they've had at the senior center, uh, which is 50 Wood Street. I know I'll be there with, and, you know, uh, with as many staff, central office staff want to come. And if any committee members want to come or council members, um, breakfast is on me. I can swing the $3. So it's just, it's great to see our students interact. I mean, the food's incredible. You know, the menu is you get scrambled eggs, pancakes, home fries, two bacon or two sausage, one or eat, one of each. Coffee and orange juice, um, for $3. So.
Wow.
And it's just nice, it'll just be nice to see. I love seeing them. And it's just nice. It'll just be nice to see. I love seeing them interact with some of the seniors, some of Project Friends individuals and, and, you know, the other adults that that show up. So feel free to come and we'll be there eight o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the report? You can just raise your hand, Mr. Pearson. Yep.
Two quick ones. I want to follow up with what Mr. Florio was, was starting to mention. Since we're having graduation at a, at a new venue compared to my experience anyway. I got the invitation, which is great, but, but we also need the, the details of the logistics, you know, where to park, where, where to meet, et cetera. So looking forward to that. Question on masks. Is the mask guidance, is that applicable to, to students and staff or just students at this point?
It's students and staff right now in, in buildings, in facilities. You know, obviously, if a teacher's in the classroom alone, you know, having lunch and things like that, you know, that, that's perfectly fine. Yeah. And I mean, it's, it's, it's challenging, you know, even with, I think there was some new guidance that came out that we need to review even on recess, right, Mr. Coward? That just came out?
Yeah, I wanted to get off of you. So what they were talking about is outdoor mask wearing for kids during recess and phys ed. And so they're saying that, some of the guidance is saying kids can take their masks off outside if you're able to maintain three or more feet between the kids. Problem is, you know, elementary level recess and phys ed, depending on the activity, it's kind of challenging to be able to, you know, securely say that you're going to maintain three feet between all the kids when they're all playing outside. So at this point, it seems that we're going to kind of stick with what we have and try to get some more information from RIDO to make sure how we, if we were to put that in place, how we would put it in place and what that would potentially look like.
Yeah, thank you.
But to answer your question, yes, that, that's applicable to both students and and staff.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. That's all I had.
Thanks, Mr. Pearson. Mrs. Coloneyan, anything?
No, I have no questions.
You're good. Okay, thanks. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I just want to make two quick thing, two quick points. First of all, I did send a special note to, to Mr. Levis on this, but I'll say it in the public that I wanted to thank the EMA and all the staff who worked the vaccine clinic. My own daughter went. She has some anxiety on it and was nervous, but the staff, you know, the report I got, my wife actually went with my daughter to this, but the reports I got was high accolades. They were great. They calmed her down. They couldn't be nicer. Got it through it. And, and it was, it was just a great experience for them. And as a parent, I just want to express my sincere gratitude to everyone who worked at clinic. I know it's a lot of time and energy that we put into it. I know we vaccinated quite a few individuals at that. Hopefully, we'll get, continue to get great participation moving forward. And I'm just looking forward to the, the next school year where the masks hopefully come off, we can just get back to normalcy. The second thing is I also want to thank the staff for pulling together graduation in person. I'm sure we'll get the details, but the, the big thing for me is the fact that we're actually having it at home this year. And we typically travel down the URI. We have this big event. Well, that's all fine and good. We talk about community, right? We talk about local businesses and supporting community and, and showing the community, you know, but what we're doing. What better way to show our community what we're doing is to have graduation here. The parents are going to go out to eat after, hopefully they frequent local businesses. They're going to see the red and white colors throughout Coventry that day. So I know they're working hard to create that event. I appreciate their efforts, but I'm, I'm really, you know, sincerely thankful that we're actually having it home. URI is great. That's my alma mater too. But, you know, I'm looking forward to just going down the street to graduation and, and seeing the smiles on people's faces in the community as those graduates come out and kind of dispersed to the local businesses and, and are out inside the community. So keep up the great work and, and thanks for all the updates, Mr. Levis.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murray. Mr. Florio?
Hi, Mr. Levis. I have, I have a question for you. You may, you may not like it. As you know, we, we always give our council a copy of our contracts, and they let us know, you know, we let them know what's been ratified. Now, the council recently ratified municipal con, contract and the financial impact statement.
Mr. Florio, I, I just want to say, and, you know, I don't mean to, I hope this doesn't come across the wrong way, but it's, it's not an agenda topic, and I'm not really comfortable getting into the council. And, you know, I, I feel like this has been a really good, and we've had a really good positive thing here. And I'd just like to, I'd like to end it that way if we could.
Absolutely. I just, I, I just feel that we're, we're completely transparent with everyone. And my feeling is that I would like to see a ratified municipal contract and a financial impact statement as well. And I agree with you, Mr. Levis, 1,000%. Thank you. And that's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. I have nothing for Mr. Levis. Is there anyone in the public that would like to ask a question to Mr. Levis on his update?
Doesn't look like there are any hands.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I almost called you Mr. Murray. So I guess we can move on to number 12, which is citizens' comments. Are there any attendees that would like to comment or have any citizen remarks?
There's any takers?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And so I guess we can schedule the next meeting. Do you know if we did get a, that June, June 9th is the correct date, Mr. Florio, if you make this motion? So I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make motion that the next virtual meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Wednesday, June 9, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Murray. Kathryn Patnun.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Donna Coloneyan.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. And finally, our adjournment, it looks like I have 7:18, which is another record for us. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the meeting be adjourned at 7:18 PM.
I second the motion.
Thank you. And if we could just have a hand raised if we want to adjourn. Thank you. Looks like it's five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance.
Have a nice weekend.
Have a nice long weekend, everyone. Enjoy.
Memorial Day.
Exactly. All right. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.